Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this November 17th meeting of the Servile School Committee. Pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2025, this meeting in the School Committee will be conducted by hybrid participation. We will post an audio recording, audio/video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of these proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting on the City of Servile website and local cable access government channels. With that, Dr. Carmona, will you please call the rule?
Through the chair, Ms. Beton. Dr. Ackman.
Here.
Mr. Green.
Here.
Mr. Beton.
Here.
President Davis. President Davis, here. Mayor Valentine. Ms. Barish.
Here.
Dr. Phillips.
Here.
Chair Cretchen.
Here.
We have quorum.
All right, we will start with a moment of silence and a salute to the like.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will start with a report from our student representatives.
So this week, or coming up next week, actually, we are having our annual Thanksgiving pep rally. There will be some traditional Highlander games, like the three-legged race and the Highlander football race, which it's like, you race to put on a set of football gear. And then there's also a raffle, which all the proceeds of will be going towards helping the food drive at the school. And the winners of the raffle will get two Celtics tickets. Oh, yeah, and student leaders are organizing the entire thing. Myself and the other class officers are going to be running the pep rally. We're also doing all the planning and take it to Marley.
So in addition to a lot of cool events like that, there have also been a lot of successful fundraisers. Notably, their junior class recently had a very successful Thanksgiving pie fundraiser. We sold over 200 pies, and the proceeds will go to the junior class. Many also, like many other programs such as sports teams, have been able to have fundraisers and bake sales that have been also very successful. And back to Aiden.
Recently, we also had our music department take a field trip to see the Boston Symphony, and they are also in the process of raising money for a future music department trip, where the department will go to Chicago for, do you know what? Yeah, they'll be going to Chicago.
Yeah, so something that has happened very recently, we're in the middle of a transition from the fall to winter sports seasons. And so I believe pretty much every sports team was able to compete in the playoffs, which is very good for a school. Notably, the cross-country team was the Greater Boston League champions, and even they went on to states, which was very, really, really great for them. Yeah, but I think every, every team had a very strong season, notably also football and soccer. So, yeah, that's it from us.
Great, thank you so much for that report. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Oh, yes, thank you, Ms. Barish.
Through you, do you know if members of the public can buy raffle tickets to support the food drive and potentially win Celtics tickets?
So the plan originally was for it to be for students and staff, but I'm sure we could amend that for families to also buy a ticket, or if you, if you just want to give your student some money to buy some raffle tickets, you know? But, yeah, we'll be announcing it during the pep rally, so probably not.
All right. If there is nothing further from our students, thank you again. That brings us to approval of minutes. We have one set of minutes to approve. It'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the minutes from October 20th, 2025.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Beton, seconded by Dr. Ackman. If there is no discussion, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. There is no public comment this evening, so that brings us to the report of the superintendent. Dr. Carmona.
Through the chair. So thank you, Marley and Aiden, for your rapport, and it's great to know that the high school is engaged in all kind of fun and community activities, so thank you for sharing, and we'll see you next time. So our presentation this evening is centered on student wellness and social-emotional learning. And often when we talked about, about student educating our young children, we always think about academics, but we know that the landscape is a little bit more complex than that. We also know that learning is shaped by everything that happens in a child's life, social pressures, emotional needs, financial stability, and many other factors that affect how the students learn and grow. One issue that impacts far too many of our students and their families is housing instability. And I wanted to share that this Wednesday, I will be at the State House to represent the district in support of a bill that would promote stabilization of rent across the city of Servile. We know that housing instability is known to lower academic achievement, increase absenteeism, and creates long-term challenges in educational growth. Within our district, we have identified about 65 students who are homeless or experiencing housing insecurity, plus 20 unaccompanied youth determined to be homeless, and 31 students on our prevention list that are most likely to become homeless. So this is a real issue for us in Servile. So speaking in support of this bill reflects the district's ongoing efforts to promote equity and strengthen community stability. So a copy of that bill is in your packets this evening, and so we certainly hope that this legislation is going to move forward. I also want to thank Senator Julian Seer, Representative Richard Hagerty, and the Joint Committee on Housing for taking steps to provide stability for most of our vulnerable students here in Servile. So tonight, we focus on another aspect of student wellness and social-emotional learning for our students. And we know that while academic achievement is important, true success comes from nurturing the whole child, supporting their emotional well-being, social skills, and sense of belonging. We know that that has been one of the goals and one of the core values of this school committee for decades. We know that a student who feels emotionally confident is more likely to thrive in a school. When a student struggles academically, it is quite possible that they may also be dealing with social-emotional challenges. And that's why it is so important for us to look at the whole picture when supporting our students' growth. And now, our Director of Student Services, Liz Doncaster, is here this evening. She will present the findings from our three-year growth plan for social-emotional learning and discuss how we address many of the challenges our students encounter in their everyday lives. So welcome, Liz, through the chair, to the chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Superintendent, thank you, Chair. Hello, everyone, good evening. Yes, my name is Liz Doncaster, I'm the Director of Student Services, and in Student Services' next slide, we take care of things like the Superintendent said, all things social-emotional development, mental and behavior health, physical well-being, and we take care and support the whole child across all schools. This connects to the strategic plan with the priority number three, wellness and joy, next slide. So I came before this body three years ago, and I talked about my social-emotional growth plan, that was a three-year plan, that I had five initiatives that we wanted to implement over time, and we have done that. And so tonight, I want to talk about each one individually and give you some data on see, and how they're, they are doing. The first one is our SEL curriculum. We knew when we came back from COVID that we needed a new updated SEL curriculum, so we put together a working group, we reviewed 30 curriculums, and we actually came back around to the new updated version of Second Step. And the reason why we liked this updated version of Second Step, because it had more modern topics, it put students in small groups, did a lot of turn and talk, did a lot of kinesthetic moving around, as opposed to a teacher standing in front of a whiteboard teaching the, the subject. We also liked it because it was very user-friendly, and it had a one-hour online onboarding for new teachers, so we could onboard a new teacher anytime during the school year, keeping it cost-effective and consistent. It also included six bullying, explicit bullying lessons, which we have permanently moved to October to coincide with National Anti-Bullying Month. And this year, we had our Unity Day, which we will have now in every October, which I gave you the orange t-shirts for. And that was really great to see all the orange across the city on that day. We took a lot of pictures, it was a great day. This is also going to be supported, and I'll talk about this a little bit further in the presentation, by our SEL specialists, but we also got, which I worked hard for, to get an SEL block in our K-8 schools, a set aside time to explicitly teach social-emotional skills to our students. The second initiative was restorative justice. We're actually in our fourth year of implementation of restorative justice practices district-wide, and basically those are our community circles in every school. And I can say every school, because the high school this year and last year added, onto their third period, 15 more minutes for circle practice. So every high school student gets to be sit in circle for one period at least a week, which is a big win for us. We also have a lot, we have Cynthia Masalon up at the high school, who now has her certificate from Suffolk University, who is running peer circles, so peers are running their own circles, community circles for their friends. We also, in the K-8, we have weekly SEL and RJ block time built into the schedule, so circles are happening on the daily or at least weekly. And what we're really excited about is our SEL specialists, who are trained in restorative justice all three levels, this summer, we worked on putting our own internal circle keeper training together. So this keeps our, the restorative practices sustainable and consistent when we train our staff every year. So now we have our own train, train-the-trainer model. The third initiative is the role, which I think is the most important part of this, is we have SEL specialists in every building. The SEL specialists, like I said, are trained in all three levels of restorative justice by Suffolk University. They're also trained in the Second Step management outline, so, online portal, so they can tell in their school exactly what teacher is on what lesson in Second Step. And so then they can support teachers who, who may need a little push to, to do more lessons, or they're, they're always in the building for ongoing support, and they also have a voice on the ILT, so they can have a voice in, in planning professional development for their building. And then we did a lot of work this year, last year and the year before, on the Behavior/Response System. We had to come up with a clear Behavior/Response Chart that, that showed the responsibility of what is a teacher responsible for in Tier One in the classroom as far as behavior, when can the teacher reach out and have somebody come to support the classroom, and when is it appropriate for the student to leave the classroom based on behavior? So we did a lot of training around this. We actually got a group together, APs, deans, we worked out the schedule, we trained out the schedule, and what this does, the schedule, the chart, the system, I should say, and it creates consistency across the district. We also had to involve, we realized when we were doing that, there were too many behavior codes in Aspen, there's something like over 100 behavior codes, so it was watering down the data. So we worked with Tech and DESI to carve out around 20, in the low 20s, conduct codes that are more specific, like, for instance, I think there were seven to eight codes for fighting. So it just was very subjective on what you would pick as a code. So now we've whittled down those codes, and it makes the, the data that we get, that we are getting more clear and concise. For instance, we did get data out of last year, disruptive behavior in the classroom was our biggest conduct referral, class cuts, and leaving class. So with this information, the high school is now working with their teachers and doing some professional development around Tier One interventions, behavior management in the classroom, because they realize this, these, those are behaviors coming out of the classroom, so let's work with teachers to give them more, more tools to manage behavior within the classroom. So this is a few behaviors. So district-wide, our conduct referrals are down 23%. Are you with me? Next slide, sorry, Erica. And across the K-8s, they are, it's down 18%. And this is a big, this is, this is big to me, to have those go down that much within a year. And our final initiative was the Social-Emotional Behavior Response Team, Behavior Support Team, we still don't know what to call this, but it's a very effective team. It has Kevin Van Horn, who's a BCBA, an RBT, and a social worker, and they, we, buildings refer to this team when they've done a lot of Tier One, Tier Two interventions. So we have people coming to the classroom to support the classroom, but we don't believe the student needs an evaluation. There's that gray area in between. So this team comes in, and Kevin does a great job of taking the time to observe, gather data, and then from the data, make a behavior plan, and then take the time to explain the behavior plan, plan, train the behavior plan to the adults in the class, and then stick around to watch how they do it. And that has resulted in the 31 cases that we had last year, 88% of them referred, the referred students decreased in intervening behavior. So that's a big win for us. But we are seeing, and still continue to see, he, that team gets pulled to schools for grades K through two. So our early young kids are showing some challenging behaviors still in our classrooms. As always, we have our embedded health services, Riverside Home for Little Wanderers, Neighborhood Clinicians, Neighborhood Clinicians is our, there's no barriers there, they don't take insurance, and they have multilingual support. So last year, we covered, these teams covered 200 students in individual therapy, where, you know, parents didn't have to drive them, didn't have to make appointments, we, the individual therapy comes to the building, and that's very important to us. We also upped our, re-upped our three-year contract with the Teen Center at the high school, very important relationship between the city and ourselves, and we have supported 792 mental health visits last year in SY25, in that building. So I wanted to talk a little bit more about some other supports in place, so we've had Nadia's here, she's my manager of social workers, she's here to support me, it's just so nice. We've had a social worker in every building since 2022. Just to give you an example of the numbers that they cover, last year, they had 261 individual students supported and 298 in groups. And what she gave me, which I, data she looked into, I said, you know, let's look at the data, and she looked at the data and found that our safety assessments have dropped 74% since SY23. And what a safety assessment is, is when a student is considering or verbalizing harming themselves and other, or they, they verbalize a threat, we immediately do a safety assessment. So that is down 74%. We also, this year, brought in a second full-time prevention and intervention specialist dedicated to the high school. I've been, we've been wanting that, because the high school takes up a lot of time with education and reactive actions around, a lot, mostly around vaping and other, other issues. So now we have a second, so Kristen Strelis, who's been with us for years, can now, she's freed up to do some proactive education at the K-8 level, which is where it all begins for us. Our supervisors of attendance are my eyes and ears of the community, they are out every day knocking on doors, doing, they did 700 home visits last year, and they usually bring somebody who has knowledge of the, of the student, usually the social worker, a counselor will go with them, or a dean, somebody who knows the child will be there with them. Our mediation program, you know I doubled the staff there, so last year, they, they supported 660 students, and Janine and I, who runs the program, wanted to tell me that more kids are coming to my office saying, Ms. Die, I need help, can you, can I mediate with a friend? So they're actually self-referring themselves at this point. And she's done a great job of continuing to train middle school and high school peers, peer mediators, we do that every year. And then we have those circle trainers at the high school, and we added a few more bilingual adjustment counselors. So again, this results in positive data for us. Our attendance rate remains above the state average and is continuing to climb, while our chronic absenteeism rate went down by 6%, and it continues to decrease, and our students increasingly seek support proactively, and our behavior referrals have gone down. Mike? Okay. It's got stuck on my screen. Can you cut to the next screen? So, yes, so there's three proactive measures that I want to talk about, because moving forward, we're teaming up with BCH, Boston Children's Hospital, we are teaming up on, sorry. They're looking at the MTSS, the Multi-Tier System of Supports, and the crosswalk between academics and SEL and mental health. So they're doing a pilot program for universal screeners, so they're doing surveys, trying to figure out where the holes are in our interventions, when it comes to, like the Superintendent says, so many times when a student is maybe not doing well academically, has something to do with maybe we're not supporting them socially enough. So they're looking for those holes, they'll have a lot of data for us at the end of the school year. And then we, we are doing a little bit of a dive into bullying versus peer conflict. We have, I think there is a, a disconnect between the definition of peer conflict and the definition of bullying. I think students and parents, we have to do some work there communicating that definition. The data shows last year, we had 79 bullying investigations, and 25 of them came out to be bullying. So that's a third of the reported investigations. And if it's 25 students, that's less than 1% of our student body is involved in bullying. It does seem like it's a bigger issue, because it's an emotional issue, and we have a lot of parents coming to us, but I think we need to do some more communication around the difference between what is developmentally appropriate peer conflict versus bullying. And lastly, I wanted to talk about 504 accommodation plans. Since I took this role from Rich Malillo, I, our 504 accommodation plans have tripled. And so the responsibility of a 504 accommodation plan lies on the counselor in our buildings. So this year, we're getting together and we're putting a working group together to talk about roles, responsibilities, protocols, and procedures, and we're, I want to look at an online management program, because right now, we have our counselors managing these accommodation plans, which teachers are legally obliged to implement the accommodations, and I just, I just feel like that's too much on their shoulders, so hopefully out of this working group, we'll come up with a plan to make that a more supportive district effort versus the individual counselor in each building. And with that, I am, I had a nice sentence at the end, I want to say, okay, I'm gonna say it. In summary, our department continues to strengthen SEL, restorative practices, mental health supports, and behavior systems. We are committed to aligning academic and social-emotional supports, maintaining students' safety and well-being, and continuously improving through data-driven approaches. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions? Liz, I'm sure we'll have, yes, Ms. Barish, and then Dr. Ackman, and then Mr. Green.
Through you, it's always nice to see you, it's been a while. Welcome. This is a terrific presentation, and the data is obviously really promising, so awesome. It's great when we implement things and they seem to work. I was curious about, I think on one of the slides, it said something about having a bilingual adjustment counselor, and it was just below a line that was talking about peer circle keepers?
Yes.
And it occurred to me, I just wondered, do we have multilingual peer circle keepers? Like, do we have students who are able to facilitate circles for their multilingual peers?
I will check on that and get back to you. I'm sure Cynthia Masalon is running those, she's an AP at the high school, I would assume that that would come naturally to her to, to put that in there, but I will find out, and I'll email you back with that. That's, that, good question, thanks. I like that question.
Dr. Ackman.
Thank you, thank you for presenting. This is really wonderful and really important work. More than anything else, maybe this is me getting up on a soapbox, but I want to say, in a time when we're anticipating tightening budgets, I want to stand very firm in my support of the work you do, and that it is worth our dollars, it is worth the investment. And I personally, you know, should budgets tighten, will be working very hard to protect and continue to support the work, as you protect and continue to support all our students, but our vulnerable students, as they're figuring out who they are, as they're engaging, and, you know, having those difficult growing conversations and learning to be like, you know, complete people.
Yeah, you get me, you get it. Thank you very much for your support, but you get it, I love it.
Mr. Green, and then Mr. Cretchen.
I'm really glad I get to follow up Dr. Ackman, because I think my question builds off that. I think, and I'm not sure if it's to you or to the Superintendent, perhaps to both, but two, it was only two, maybe three years ago, when we were first coming out of the lockdown phase of the pandemic, there was a lot of talk about behavior incidents, particularly at the high school. Understandably, kids have just gone through generational level trauma, we're figuring out how to, in the middle of growing up, in the middle of puberty, we're figuring out how to act in society again. Over the three years since, we have seen a steady decline in these behaviors, and we've seen it without, we've seen it, as we've got positive in keeping with our values, policies that met students with compassion, with respect, we didn't go the way some other districts made it go, towards increasing, increasingly, disciplinary practices, and we see that our strategies are working. That said, when we were seeing more incidents, we also had a lot of talk about it, it was a very lively topic in the community. So in keeping with Dr. Ackman's, I think, absolutely correct belief that this is the investment that we're maintaining, even if budgets get tightened, my question is twofold. I guess it's only onefold. What can we do to tell the story of these last three years for the public, so that they understand, and for the wider community, so they understand that we are able to address the challenges in ways that are keeping with our values, and will continue to be in keeping with our values? And what do we, what do we do to work in a way that's clear for the community as a whole?
It's a good question. I know we have a, an online presence, you know, we have a website, so, and then we have a great communications department in Darryl, so I, I would look to the Superintendent on how we sort of, I don't want to say advertise, or just let this community know that the hard work that we've done. And I should say, and I, and I failed to say in my presentation, this is just not me. This is my Assistant Director, the Manager of Social Workers, and especially at the building base level, the deans, the adjustment counselors, the counselors, the social workers, who are on the front line every day, you know, in classrooms with teachers implementing the SEL, the SEL specialists, it takes a village, it really does, of support, of a support team to, to get these results that we've gotten in the past three years.
Through the chair, so thank you for the question, and I totally want to echo the comment from Dr. Ackman, is that we definitely value the investment around social-emotional, and I hope we can continue that despite the potential shortfalls that might be in the horizon. Yes, that idea of what is story and how do we tell the story, it is critical. I think the numbers speak for themselves. I also know that there are, there are narratives that sometimes take hold of the social media sphere, and so that also, one experience of one child or one family is one too many, and those are hard to manage, especially when we know that, as Director Doncaster mentioned, sometimes this notion of like, what is conflict versus what is bullying is something that often, we know that children are coming in with a, a system that is a little bit less mature to manage conflict, and so part of that is the pandemic, part of that is we are coming back again to emphasize what matters most in terms of the, our academic development. And that, but what I mean by that is that it's not just academics, it's also social-emotional. So the question is a good one, it is one, I know that if I would have have principal, the principal of the high school.
Alyssa.
Alyssa, Kristen, Kristen, she would have told us the story of the, what is possible at the high school right now as a result of less, less conflicts that are taking place. So it's a great question, is one that hopefully we can tell it through social media, as well as having advocates out in the community to share the story. But it is one that we will continue to reinforce.
I had Mr. Beton, and then Dr. Phillips.
Thank you, Chair, through you. I'm so grateful for the conversation that has preceded my comment here. I'm so grateful for the conversation that has preceded my comment here, particularly Dr. Ackman's elevation of the support that she and I share for the great work that you and the rest of your department do. No, it's not, it's you collective. And I do want to hold that in, in parallel, I guess, with what Dr. Carmona just stated around one child undergoing a crisis being one too many, that we need to be there, I'm paraphrasing inexpertly what you just said, so I'll, I'll let what you said stand, but it resonated with me. And so the one number that jumped out at me most dramatically from your presentation was the 74% drop in safety assessments since 2022, 2023.
SY23.
Sorry?
SY23, yeah.
Yeah, right, exactly.
Three years.
And every single one of those incidents is not only a student whose life potentially has been, you know, saved or dramatically improved, it's a whole classroom that is improved and benefits from that intervention. So I really do think that storytelling is a key piece of this and something that we need to continue to think about how we carry forward. Question entirely unrelated. Can you talk a little bit about restorative recess? I hear from my own eighth grader about restorative recess. And when I asked him what restorative recess was, he said, and this wasn't, this was just unprompted, I just said, what is it? And he said, it's just what they call detention now. It's like, oh. And I don't think that's true. So I would love to be able to respond to him and others who ask me those sorts of questions.
So let me just start by saying restorative recess is not happening in every building. It is something they are trying in the building you are speaking about.
Thank you.
And so, and it is, instead of going to recess, they sit in circle and are supposed to talk about what is, what was the conflict, where it began, and how they can get to know each other better as students, as peers, so they can find some common ground. So it's meant to be restorative in the fact that it's meant to rebuild the damage, rebuild the community, but it's not happening in all our schools. And I would say that's more like a pilot that I'm keeping an eye on. I'm going to put it that way. Is that okay?
Yeah. Thank you.
Dr. Phillips and then Ms. Petone.
Through you, Chair. Thank you so much for this presentation.
Are you warmed up now? She was locked out.
Finally, I'm finally warmed up. I'm still shivering, though. It's cold in here. But thank you for this great presentation. It is clear you are doing an awful lot of work with your team and it is having some really promising impacts. You know, I'm always interested in the intersection of our SEL work and our equity work, and I'm wondering, could we get the data in here disaggregated by race, ethnicity, English language status, and special education status? I think we would have a.
The attendance and the discipline data?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that can be done.
We'd have a much more powerful story to tell if we were able to see those drops all across the board, so.
Okay. I will be happy to get that to you. I have 10 minutes of presentation, so you can only fit in some.
Ms. Petone and then Ms. Barish.
Thank you, through you, Chair. Thank you for the presentation. There is a lot of content here and this work that you've been doing over the last, so three years. I'm looking forward to, I guess it's more of a comment, that I'm looking forward to seeing kind of what the next stage of the plan is. And I don't know if that's something that we will see in this school year or whether or not that will be something we see next school year, but as well as, you know, kind of a, I know how complicated it is to kind of track SEL data because.
It is.
It, there's a lot of pieces and you also, you know, you don't want to track referrals if you need, you don't want people to feel like they shouldn't have referrals if they need the referral. You know, there's all complexities there because it's really more about, you know, how students are engaging and how are they feeling? And there's this link to academics, and I don't know what that's going to look like as we move forward. It's like, it's the same way, I appreciate Dr. Phillips bringing up, you know, kind of how do we disaggregate this data? How do we look at the data around social emotional work that we're doing in the relationship to our student academics? So it'll, it's something like kind of forward thinking. I did have one quick question, and that's something, like you said, I'm sure you have all these seeds in your mind already. It's exciting to hear about, you know, the re-upping of Second Step and the training that you're doing and the fact that you can get new teachers trained immediately, that's huge, or as quickly as possible, at least to get them up to speed. I know a one-hour training is not going to be the whole thing. I am curious, so now we've introduced an SEL block that's one time per week?
In most K-8s, it's on Wednesdays, yes.
And.
That's for explicit teaching, but, you know, you should, a teacher should bring all that content into the other content areas and weave it in, you know.
Yeah, but there's going to be like a lesson every.
Yes, there's going to be an explicit lesson every.
And there's a curriculum that they go throughout through the year.
Yes.
And this is led by the classroom teachers, correct?
Yes.
And so I just want to clarify that the SEL specialist is tracking that.
Yes.
Because that information is being somehow updated in the system?
They have to update it. When you finish a lesson, you hit, you know, lesson submitted, so then that, then that shows up on the dashboard that you finished that lesson and you finished that unit. So we are, we do have a way to track each individual teacher at each classroom.
Okay, that's, I just want to make sure I understood how that works.
And I appreciate the talk around the academic and social emotional crosswalk because we know when we came back from COVID, we swung towards social emotional. We all knew we needed that. And then we realized we were, we needed to pay more attention to academics and we're kind of swinging that way now. And I would love to work on finding that sweet step between the over, you know, the crosswalk between SEL and academics and how we can, you know, really be effective at figuring out the interventions that a student needs. I believe we do a pretty good job, but it's always worth looking at. And I think that our partnership with BC, Boston Children's Hospital and the MTSS and the surveys they're doing and the screeners that they're doing and the data they're collecting, I do think they are going to give us a good, hopefully some good data at the end of the, at the end of the school year.
Barish.
Thank you. And this is not directly related, so if someone else has a comment or question, they can go first. No. I'm just thinking about student support and the press release from the city about a million dollars that's going toward hunger relief, food insecurity, carrot cards, and school markets were mentioned. I'm not sure if you were planning on talking about those later.
That would be Ruth Santos in SFLC. She's, yeah, she loves coming to present, she'll present to you.
No, I guess I was just, I just wanted to say this is wonderful and if, I was curious about whether you know if the carrot cards, if the amount of money that is being committed to carrot cards will restore what families became accustomed to last year? And either way, should parents who are feeling under particular stress, I mean, food security stress, reach out to their liaisons? Is that the best thing to do?
Through the chair, so that's the way it is done. And in fact, when I spoke to, because I wanted to see what is the first acknowledgement of the contribution of the city towards that. I was reminded that liaisons actually manage that on a regular basis, that any request for food and even I think that amount is not going to be enough to address all the needs of families. So there is significant need, even just as you said, the market, food markets, we were actually short to provide all the food that we often provide. So it's going to be great, but it's also, we have to kind of make sure that it's managed to support the needs in a way that allows us to make that a little bit sustainable for now. So it's a great contribution. I don't know how much, I mean, I haven't spoken to Ruth to see what is the message, but when I talked to individual family liaisons, they said, yeah, we just manage that on a basis. We know who are the families that need it the most and we engage with them. But it's a great news. I did, I wanted to recognize that, that the mayor provided that finance into support our families.
I just wanted to ask a quick question and then I'll call on Mr. Green. I'm curious about your talking about the differences between bullying and peer conflict. And I think to your point, education around that is important, and I'm just curious if you have any thoughts on how to do that education.
Well, I'll give you an example. Courtney Goslin of Winter Hill, on a parent curriculum night, she actually did a presentation on the actual definition and gave examples of what it would look like. And she really felt like that gave, really informed her parents and things have shifted a little bit in the building this year. So that's one way to do it. We can talk about it with parents whenever parent teacher conferences or whenever they're invited in. Maybe I could have principals think about putting something in their newsletters. We can have, we can do circles with students about, ask them, you know, what is their, what do they perceive as bullying? And are we doing right by them in explaining it in a way that they understand it? So they understand the difference between peer conflict and bullying. I think circles with students would be a great way to figure that out. But, yeah, we have, that's the few ways I've seen it done and I want to do it. And so I, and we're just having conversations about it because it does seem like it's a very emotional issue for a lot of parents and students. And then when it boils down to actual data, we only had 25 cases of bullying this year, which is, like I said again, less than 1% of the school population. So we're always looking at that. It's always a challenge. So I will continue to think about that. Thank you for the question.
Mr. Green.
Yeah, I want to build on Dr. Carmona and Ms. Barish's point about food insecurity. I think we're seeing, you know, between the snap cuts of the big bill, obviously the shutdown, economy, one AI bubble from popping from depression, we're seeing across the region just a stunning increase in the number of families, including families who six months ago, a year ago, not defined themselves as even being financially strapped, who are now facing food insecurity. And so I am wondering if this is perhaps a time when we should be thinking more systemically about proactively putting information out in student, in family hands, because I think, I would be shocked if there aren't families who, who this is a new experience and didn't even think that their resources, they could access in our schools that could help. So I just want to make sure we're doing everything we can to get that message out to families who are facing unprecedented times, as we keep saying.
Thank you, through the chair. And I know this is a bit of a tangent, but something that I've been thinking about, I remember the superintendent mentioned that the uptake of school breakfast has not been strong. And I think about that food and my understanding of how the program works is it has to be for students, but I don't know if there are grant programs or any way that we can bring families in to like somehow, you know, encourage families to come eat nutritious food and, you know, make it available if parents want to come in in that early window. You know, it may not be possible for many reasons, logistical, safety, but it is also a way of bringing people into our buildings and people who may not otherwise feel welcome in certain ways. And so it was just a thought and I, you know, probably should have just sent it to an email, but I'm saying it now.
Do you want to follow up?
I just imagine, I totally understand the need, but I just imagine, I mean, running a morning breakfast in schools is a full-time chaos management. It's like, you know, being in schools for so many years and just having, making sure the kids get their lunch, get their breakfast and go back into the classroom. And having adults into the space, I find that just gives me a little bit, my blood pressure rises. But I welcome creative ideas to that and we definitely should not stop thinking. But I would not be burdening our building leaders with another logistical challenge. We do have to continue to ask, how do we increase that participation for students? But it's, let's keep up the good ideas.
Mr. Green, is your hand up? And then Ms. Barish.
I did. I know that several years ago, I'm not even trying to remember how many, pre-pandemic, we were looking to expand breakfast after the bell. And that feels like something that may be worth revisiting now, just to, in a world of universal breakfast, once it's actually breakfast, it's actually universalized, it may be worth revisiting, expanding breakfast after the bell for families and students so that we know that they're at least getting access to that meal.
Barish.
I appreciate Dr. Carmona's concerns, you know, around logistics and safety and whatnot and inviting adults to participate in breakfast. I wonder if, assuming that the Capuano School functions the way it did 10 years ago when I last had children there, I wonder if that might be a unique opportunity, not necessarily for parents to partake, but maybe younger siblings, a lot of, because at least when my kids were there, you know, parents could come in and sit with their child for 15, 20, 30 minutes before the children went to their classrooms, often bringing younger siblings with them. So, you know, beyond the federal rules that might prohibit adults from eating the food, I wonder if it might be okay to serve it to those younger siblings? And since they're all there anyway, perhaps that's a special case.
Ms. Petone.
Thank you, Chair, through you. Just a quick question, if you can follow up with school by school data around bullying and sort of where are we getting the requests from and?
I can do that.
That'd be great.
An email, I can get that to you by school, investigations by school.
Thank you.
Okay. If there are no further questions, thank you again for your presentation.
Thank you.
Dr. Carmona.
So before I conclude my remarks this evening, in your packet, you will find the annual weather preparedness memo for your review. And this memo outlines our preparation for the arrival of winter and how we respond to weather emergencies across the district. So if, you know, hopefully you have a better understanding of how we make a decision around a snow day and things of that nature. And I also wanted to wish happy Thanksgiving to those who celebrate the holiday. And please make sure you enjoy time with family and friends. And also a reminder that schools close early on the 26th, and we will have no school on the 27 and 28, and we will be resuming a school on the 1st of December, which is a Monday. And with that, that's the end of my report.
So the youth health survey is not happening? Is that correct?
That is correct. We didn't have the city list, the city was not available for that presentation. Is that correct?
If you want to have a look at it, if you want to have a look at it, if I, if you were going to give us a chance to, you know, may have completely right my health facility, but if you, I have some data coming I could speak to, but I would, you know, I was, I don't believe all that.
Do we think they'll come another time or is this our only opportunity to?
So we have reached out multiple times and we, I mean, we, I acknowledge that we actually had to adjust the schedule twice because we had a couple of things that had to be adjusted for the multiple things that needed to be decided that require a vote. And so we moved that meeting with them. And so the last time that we invited them, they were not available. So I am assuming that that's part of the logistical moving of the dates, but I am confident that we will be able to have them back here at some point.
Okay. Dr. Phillips.
Thanks, through you. When whoever reaches out to them, plans to, could you just say that their presentation looks rockin' and we would love to hear them talk about it? But my real question is to the superintendent and team, is there any changes to our snow inclement weather plans that we should know about?
No, not, I mean, it's the same information as this is done in collaboration. I mean, we have a new person at the city level that is emergency preparedness, which he seems to be more systematic. And so I think we haven't sat down just to, he has more data actually than I have seen before, so I'm hoping that we will be better informed than just, you know, looking at the snowflakes coming down and making a decision the day before. So.
Mr. Green and then Ms. Petone.
I actually thank you for that question and answer. We've noticed over the last few, several years, thanks to climate change, that we're not, we had not in the last several years gotten a level of snow gotten in past years. past years. I would love if at some point in the future, we could get the city's perspective on what, if anything, they think that, if they think it's a trend that we should continue to expect. And what, if anything, that does to change our snow plans on the macro level? In terms of like, you know, does that change what we need to do in terms of equipment, in terms of like the ever-present issue of like, sure, we can, the snow may be over, but the cloud, like all the parking stuff and all the other stuff that went into snow cities in the past? In a world where we meant I'd be seeing as much snow as we did, does any of that change? And I'd love to know if the city is even thinking about that stuff or if we're going to take the lead on that as well.
Through the chair, I wonder, so the question is more related to how we interact with the city in terms of some of the expectations around the snow parking and, because I know that, I know Mr. Batton has, and City Council Davis, President Davis, you work in a committee also that actually helps us inform some of the facilities' needs. And so I wonder that might be a place where we can have that conversation.
We can put, draft an order to discuss it there.
It's a great question. And I know that, just so, I mean, that is a question that I hear constantly from our educators, the issue of parking. And I know that that often is something that comes up and is often unresolved. So anything that could be done to improve that, that would be great.
And related to that, in past years, I know we've heard an issue when there's snow and certain playgrounds and the city doesn't want to plow the playgrounds. And I don't remember where we've left that in past years or if it's ever been resolved, but I guess I just wanted to flag it again to try and prevent it from becoming a thing again this year.
Continues to be a source of contention. Luckily, the high school is not at that level anymore. We, because we couldn't treat it, that would have avoided the warranty at the high school, but we are beyond that. So now it has, the pavers have been cured, so that's not an issue. But places like the hilly or the west, no, not the west, but I know the hilly that has that rubberized surface cannot be shovel. And unfortunately, students cannot be there with a certain amount of snow, which is very, you know, impactful for kids. But we haven't found a solution. So I think this is a question as to like-
I was just going to say, maybe this is another question for your subcommittee. Mr. Davis?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Through you two, whomever, and you all may be able to answer this, and I don't because I'm the new guy here. Does that, the scenario you're talking about, we not being able to shovel those rubberized surfaces, does that, are you saying that keeps the school closed?
It doesn't keep the school closed, it keeps the playgrounds from being used.
From being used, okay. Because I think there's, I think there's a couple of different conversations here. So as we think about how to frame the one or multiple items for our committee, we'll kind of think about those two things. But if I understand through you, Madam Chair, to the good representative from Ward 4, one of the questions is sort of overall, you know, what are the factors that are impacted by snow days that we might consider, that might change or we might need to be thinking about changing as we look at climate change and, you know, whether there's any opportunity there for efficiencies or otherwise, just to understand that better. Do I understand that request correctly? Okay, I see a thumbs up, so thank you.
Yes, there were two different questions, sort of, his question reminded me of my question, but it is not exactly related. Did you have a new question, Laura? Okay, so Ms. Barish, do you want to follow up? I'll come back to you.
Thank you through you. Acknowledging Mr. Green's point that maybe snow isn't going to be such a factor in the near future, I just want to flag the fact that the Kennedy Playground redesign project is moving forward. And so as we're thinking of, as we, as the people who make decisions about playground design are thinking about that, just a reminder that that is something that should be taken into account is how, how the playground will be or not be available for use in winter months.
Ms. Batton, then Dr. Ackman, and then I'll come back to Ms. Batton.
Thank you, Chair, through you. I just want to add to this conversation that climate change may produce situations, especially here in the Northeast, where there's more moisture in the air, which may lead to bigger and more frequent snowstorms, even if we have, you know, warmer weather overall. So there's some, there's some complexities around that. And I, you know, I think it's far beyond us as a city or a school committee to, you know, predict that. But we're going to have snow in New England into the, for decades to come. How that presents itself is anyone's guess, but I do think it's wise for us to start planning around it.
Dr. Ackman?
Thank you through the chair, as possibly an attempt to follow up from both Ms. Barish and Mr. Batton. Only because I know someone who is part of engineering, one of the things I have learned about our playgrounds is times when things aren't getting repaired, it is my understanding, those who are more involved with buildings can tell me if I'm wrong, that, you know, it could be that the climbing structure, the, you know, spinny thing, whatever it was at the time, was, you know, the best price for whatever the unit was, but that the pieces to repair are either like nearly impossible to come by or incredibly expensive. And I say that only because as we were considering the Kennedy Playground renovation, I hope that those, I think were part of it, but, you know, who make the choices about the equipment that goes in, we don't just look at the price point in installation, we consider, you know, if there are, if there's some sort of maintenance package and then if, like what the long-term repair costs, like almost kind of when you're like buying a car, like what you should be doing. I just bought a car, so deeply enmeshed in it. But only because like, you know, I've seen our kids not be able to access things on their playgrounds for months and months at a time for this. So, you know, as an attempt to, if we are spending this money and investing time and energy, you know, it could be that the item is a little bit more expensive off the top or that we pay extra for like a maintenance or repair package. But I think it will be, you know, better for us in the long run and certainly for the students we're looking to serve, if we take that into consideration.
Agreed, but that is primarily a city decision, not a school committee decision, because the playgrounds belong to the city, much like our buildings. But we have a representative here from the city council, so our, you know, soapboxing is still a good idea. I just wanted to point out that we don't actually pay for the playgrounds. Ms. Batton?
Thank you through you. I may have answered my own question. I just, I was surprised by the re-titling because it used to be called the Youth Risk Behavior Survey. I don't know if there's a reason why it's changed. Is that what they're changing, calling it now statewide? It's only important because we compare our data to state data. And just so everyone knows, it also includes several specific questions. So the bulk of it is the same thing that goes across the state, and then we've added information that we think is valuable. So it's the same thing, they just.
Through the chair, I'm not quite sure of the answer. This is part of the reason why we wanted, but we noticed the same thing and did investigation on our team while we were reviewing the presentation. So we Googled, we noticed that across the state, they're using this language like the school district youth health survey. So we know that it's at least statewide. We were not able to tell whether this is the new iteration of the Youth Risk Behavior Survey or if it is something new. So that's something that we'll have to connect back with the city on, but we also noticed that as well.
I'm guessing it's the same thing, only because it has like the same alternating years and, but we'll learn when hopefully, percent, but I really would, I'm looking forward to that presentation as well. This is always really an informative process for the school committee.
Okay. If there are no more questions? Oh, yes, sorry. Thank you.
Sorry, this is only vague and maybe not that helpful, but I think the Trump administration's executive orders around gender ideology seem to profoundly impact the YRBS in January. And so I think this is our state proactively as part of their defense of our students, kind of changing the name and owning, sorry, the original items.
Thank you for that. Okay. There was more to your report? Or are we, the calendar first draft?
Yeah.
Yeah?
So that was, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you through the chair. So we do not have a first draft.
Sorry, hold on, hold up.
I apologize.
A question from Ms. Batton?
Yeah, I apologize, this is really quick. Through the chair, we usually get access to more data than the, just the presentation. I guess it's, it should be available online, the link to more data, and we can ask, you can ask the city about that. Thank you.
Thank you. That's okay. That's great. Through the chair, we do not yet have the draft of the 26, 27 school year calendar. We were ambitious and started working on it and realized that we needed to talk with a few more people on our team before putting that out for approval of dates. So we hope to have that ready by the next meeting. But that's why it was, appeared on the agenda, but then didn't make it into the packet tonight.
Makes sense? Okay. That concludes your report. Okay. Is there anything you'd like to tell us about omni-personnel report for November?
Yes, there are a few things that I wanted to share. So we have a few retirements. So after 38 years of service, Jackie Lawrence, a special education teacher at the Capuano School and the former SEU president, has decided to retire effective of June 20, 30, 2026. We also have hired a new nurse at the Hilly School, a paraprofessional for the Argenciana School, and assistant site director for OST at the East Summerville School. And also Crystal Legasky, former Kennedy School Secretary, was promoted to accounts payable specialist in the finance office at Central Office. So that's the report.
Thank you for that. Are there any questions about the personnel report? Okay, seeing none, that brings us to some reports of subcommittees. I will entertain a motion.
I move to accept the report of the Joint School Building Facilities and Maintenance Subcommittee Meeting for October 20, 2025.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Barish, seconded by Dr. Phillips. Yes, Ms. Barish?
I just wondered if Mr. Batton could clarify, it said in, or Mr. Davis, either one, or anyone else on the committee. It said that the mayor will be a continued voice on the MSBA School Building Committee. And I was just hoping for clarification, does that mean that Katiana Ballantyne will serve on the committee after she's mayor? Or that whoever has the title of mayor will continue to serve on that committee?
It's the latter.
That's what I thought, just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Thanks for clarifying.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. There is another subcommittee to approve. Yep?
I saw on the agenda, forgive me if we spoke about this already and I missed it, the draft FY 26, or school year 26, 27 calendar, is that?
That's what Dr. Boston Davis just spoke to.
I apologize.
It's not ready yet. Made it on the agenda, but it's not here. No problem. Okay, another subcommittee to approve.
I move to accept the school committee meeting for the Finance and Facilities Subcommittee Meeting Report from November 5th.
Second. Motion by Dr. Phillips, seconded by Ms. Barish. If there is no discussion on that, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, that brings us to competency determination. Dr. Boston Davis?
Thank you through the chair. In your packet, you'll see an updated or revised draft of the competency determination drafted policy. I'm happy to talk you through some of the recommended changes, and they're also tracked with red under, they're in red and they're underlined. And anything that was on the draft that I presented at our last meeting is struck through. So I added on page two, I'll start talking through some of the revisions. I added just kind of an overview definition that was also, that provides some background. It was in the background of the kind of title or cover page. I also, when I added those, I added two sentences at the end of that paragraph. The second to last sentence, which says, "While assessments may be used to measure student mastery, it is not the intent of the Summerville Public Schools to create or institute any additional high-stakes testing mechanisms." The intention behind that was based on the feedback in the discussion where we said we are not intending to replace one high-stakes test with another. And so I hope that captures that sentiment. And then the final sentence says, "When possible, various measures should be used to demonstrate mastery." Also, that came up in discussion from the committee, hoping to just name that, we hope that students are able to demonstrate mastery in more than just an assessment. And so when possible, that's named. Below that, on page two, in the middle of page two, I added a definition of an equivalent course. There was feedback from a constituent asking for the definition of that. And that also helped, so I talked through that with some of our building administrators and it helped to clarify other parts of the policy as well. So just when you see throughout the policy, the naming of the required courses or an equivalent course, this definition aims to provide more clarity there. At the end of page two, you'll notice a strike through in the bottom bullet. It says satisfactorily completing coursework shall mean a student earns full credit in a course with a final grade of 60 or higher. And then you see struck through and by meeting the school attendance standard for that course. That was also feedback from a constituent, hoping that attendance was not completed with this, the course, successfully completing a course. And so I did, per the recommendation of the constituent, I'm bringing it forward to you, struck through. That said, I do want to be clear that per the Summerville High School attendance policy, attendance is included somewhat in successfully completing a course. And in many ways, in fact, in talking to the high school administration, that clause was a bit redundant. So a student, and this policy is in their handbook, in the handbook, five unexcused absences, a student cannot earn a grade of higher than a 59. So they would not successfully complete coursework if they did not meet the school attendance standard. To be clear, that is talking about unexcused absences. That does not include a number, a host of reasons why a student's absence may be excused, including that related to a student's disability, including that for a student who is hospitalized or any other reason, a whole host of reasons. And in fact, our, you may already know this, but our high school team does a really tremendous job ensuring that they connect with every single student and ensure that sometimes they learn why something may have happened and they end up excusing absences, depending on a student situation. But I did want to be clear that although we're striking through that language or this recommendation to you is to strike through that language, attendance is still a factor in successfully completing coursework. Turning to page three, member Barish via email recommended shifting the language. And you'll see that multiple times throughout the drafted policy, where you'll see the strike through, you'll see that twice on page three, striking through their time of and adding instead to read from the end of the sentence. So courses, so they have as many opportunities as possible to demonstrate mastery before they would become eligible for graduation. That appears a couple of more times on page four. And then you'll notice on page four, in efforts to clarify- in efforts to clarify that if a student, under the section for students with disabilities, this is now the second half of page four, in order to clarify that if a student, based on their disabilities, require a modified, an alternative method to demonstrate mastery, that they will be granted that. So I just shifted the language there, and recommending a shift of language to just make that piece more clear. It reads in the, of the third bullet, under students with disabilities, "A department shall develop an alternative method for demonstrating mastery for an individual student if the student's disability and accommodations require this." And then the final addition or revision that, just again to clarify, around late enrolling students, that the competency determination review will happen at time of course registration.
Okay, thank you for that. Are there other questions? Yes, Ms. Raves?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, to the assistants of superintendent, just a quick question, clarification really on the first, the first paragraph. And I, this may have been in the earlier draft, and I just didn't think of the question at the time, so forgive me if that's the case. And this is primarily just to have the right answer if and when somebody asks me. The statement that, you know, following the ballot question, MCAS can no longer be used to determine competency determination, is that, is that accurate? Or, because my understanding is some towns are deciding to just use it anyways. Maybe that's wrong. But I just want to make sure I'm clear on, is it, is it that it's not a state requirement, but towns, towns or cities can use it, or it's that it can't be?
Thank you through the chair. So there's a couple of answers. And I'm going to just name that in the many meetings that I've been in with other superintendents, assistant superintendents, there, I think a lot of people are learning, and so there are different levels of understanding across the state. My understanding is that competency, the MCAS cannot be used for competency determination. However, unless on rare cases, which are indicated in this policy, for example, if a student is enrolling from another district, and they have passed the MCAS, that may be used in rare situations. However, MCAS can be used under a local graduation requirement. So a district can choose to use MCAS as a local high school graduation requirement, which kind of is the same. And so that is how I've seen them being written into policies. But it's my understanding, based on the language of the law, that we cannot use MCAS for the specific competency determination.
Ms. Barish?
I was just wanting to clarify, are we voting on this tonight?
Voted on by.
This needs to be passed by December. We need to have it uploaded, our policy uploaded to the state by December 31st.
Oh, so by the end of December?
By the end of December, yes.
So we don't have to vote on it tonight unless?
You don't have to vote on it, but, you know.
We could, but.
Nothing's stopping you.
I just had, I just noticed something that I would make a suggestion around, so I just didn't know if you want me to email you, or if you want to just say it now, and maybe we can vote on it?
Whatever your preference is, I'm happy to capture notes in the same way that I did last time.
May I? Okay. I just noticed on the, at the beginning, I'm on the wrong view here, the final sentence of the new paragraph, the overview paragraph, where it says, "When possible, various measures should be used to demonstrate mastery." And I feel like measures are what the person assessing it uses, not the person demonstrating it. So could it say various measures should be used to assess mastery, or various activities should be used to demonstrate mastery? Does that make sense? Okay. And then I also just wanted to recommend cross-referencing the attendance policy within the footer of this policy when it's finalized, so that people can easily find that list of, you know, reasons for excused absences and whatnot.
I move to approve this policy with Ms. Barish's friendly amendment.
Second.
I have a motion by Dr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Batton. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none? Oh, yes, please.
Sorry, are we voting on an amendment to the policy?
We're voting on the policy with the amendment.
Okay, did I, I heard a couple of different variations there. Do we, is there, which one are we?
To point out what our special community rules, so-called administrative edits, they can, the administration can just do.
So conceptually, we're comfortable? I, okay.
The actual wording, that can be fixed by the administration.
Very well, okay, thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you again for all your work on this, Dr. Boston Davis. We have a Summerville Public Schools Policy Manual up for second reading, JFAAA, the CTE Program Admissions Policy. So I will entertain a motion for that.
Move to approve?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Green, seconded by Dr. Ackman. Is there any further discussion on this policy? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to the second reading of Policy Manual Sections H and L. I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve Policy Manual Sections H and L.
Motion by Ms. Barish, seconded by Mr. Batton. Ms. Barish?
Yeah, I just want to, just want to revisit Mr. Green's request to restore the language about teachers' rights that were in, I'm just going to have to open it because I don't remember. In, there it is. Policy HB. I don't think we actually had any conversation about it, so I just wanted to have that conversation. Do we want to reintroduce, or do we want to maintain this language? Employees shall have the right of self-organization, et cetera. It's in the memo that I put in the packet.
Mr. Green?
So I am perfectly fine with using Ms. Barish's proposed language. To be clear, I think this is not so much about like changing the content of our practice of behavior, but, you know, 10 years in school, you have taught me that people can read into things. And so I don't want to give any impression that our commitment to the rights of our teachers has any way, shape, or form changed, has we cleared things. And so acknowledging those in writing the policy somewhere still makes sense to me. And I think Ms. Barish, as always, has done a great job of threading efficiency and thoroughness, so, so moved.
Okay, so I guess the motion would be to accept H and L, including the reintroduction of the employee rights language as in the memo.
Great, thank you for that. All right, so now we have that motion on the table. Is there any further discussion? Yes, please.
So I'm assuming that there's no contradiction or conflict with the language in the CVA, is that right?
It's based on mass general law, so I, I can't imagine there would be, if you'd be more comfortable with us confirming that.
Basically, the language just affirms that we recognize collective bargaining rights. So I think, it, yeah, as you said, it's a national law, and it basically affirms that we still, what we, as a district, believe in collective bargaining, we'll continue to do so.
How about if we add to the motion, accept where it contradicts collective bargaining agreement? How's that?
Great.
Then we can change it if needed.
All right, if there is no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to an MSBA update. Do we have any updates there, Dr. Ross?
Yes, through the chair. The work at the, the project of the MSBA construction of the Winter Hill and possibly the Brown continues. I know that the CAG recently met to finalize the recommendation to the mayor. I know that Andre Green is also probably more adept to provide an in-depth assessment of what's happening there. So there's two fronts, is the work of the CAG, as well as the work of the program designer. Perkins Isman has actually, not acknowledged, but has created and has convened an educational leadership team to address the programmatic needs of that building. And in that convening, we have the building principals, both Principal Goslin and Principal Ames, as well as Rich Wright, Wright's member, is a member of that team, the OPMs, myself, we have Dr. Boston Davis as well, and any department head that actually has to do with any programmatic decisions for our students in our district. So again, the work is taking two tracks. One, the work of the CAG, and again, Mr. Green probably could provide us a little bit of an update on that one. And the second one is the work that the designer, that was selected by the process that we embark on with the MSBA. Perkins Isman is working on a team. I also wanted to share that we will be convening a, two listening sessions for both educators as well as parents in January. We don't have that date yet, they're organizing that with us, to make sure that we capture the feedback from families as well as educators in our district. So that's a big part of what the, the building construction, building construction team will do, but they are informed through the work that happens in our district. So I don't know if Andre, you want to share some of the work that the CAG team has provided?
Sure, and I'll follow up by sending the draft recommendation memo to members after this meeting, and the city can, and the district can put it in our packet as well. But it looks as if the CAG is circling around recommending a larger school at the Sycamore as recommendations of the mayor. I think the memo's about explaining the whys, in some degrees addressing some of the concerns. I think it would behoove us, once the CAG makes a draft, makes a recommendation, which may be as soon as next week, I think it would be, versus the school committee, it's one of the reasons I'm making sure you get the draft, you can start thinking about it, to comment on it, either in the form of a motion collectively, or in some other way if we can't come to a collective agreement. I think, speaking for myself, I think the primary, the primary reason this is what I, my vote in the CAG's recommend the larger building, is that it's the option that gives us the most flexibility as a district going forward, and more seats is always good. As, I think there's a lot that we as a body will have to do over the next several years, both to sell any new building, and what projects to be a less positive economic climate come 2027 than perhaps it was when we started this process. But also, I think, you know, a larger building gives us an opportunity to, I know, for the first time perhaps, since building at Capuano, to think proactively, kind of reactively as to a vision to what we could do with our buildings. And so I look forward to this body and our, and our successful members having a conversation with the community as to the possibilities and opportunities that lie ahead. And so, yeah, we'll send that memo out to everyone in the morning, and if people have questions, comments, or thoughts they want to share, I hear before Monday's meeting, please reach out to me. Thanks.
Mr. Batton?
Thank you, Chair, through you. Thank you, Mr. Green, for that distillation of what has been a very complex process with lots of data and different perspectives. One thing, in, in just tuning in recently to conversations happening at the CAG, I thought I heard a request from several members of the CAG for school committee as a whole to weigh in on, on some aspect of what the recommendation would be. Is that, is, can you speak a little bit about, through you, Chair, to what that request is and how you interpret that?
Sure. Yeah, I think there was, there was definitely some back and forth, particularly, I'm going to be shamelessly casual calling Matthew, because I can't remember the last name off my head, over whether or not the school committee would make a formal recommendation to the recommending body. I know, we've, we've had conversations in this, in this horseshoe about pros and cons. I've relayed those. It is certainly my opinion that without doing a process, like, the majority of the work together, feedback and data and all these things, was done by the CAG. As I said in last week's meeting, had I been mayor when the decision, we made on how to structure this recommendation, I'd have tasked the school committee with doing it. And we would have done the public process, and they were gathering on stuff. That was not, that was not the choice the mayor made. I think our mission now is in the CAG. Certainly, I think if we feel strongly that there is a right answer, we should give the CAG, I would not be opposed to doing that. I don't know that I think, I don't know my, I don't know that I think that is the right path, as I mentioned, but if members disagree, that's certainly something we could, we could do. And we could also make our own recommendations to the mayor. But I would, my read on the conversations we had, both in this horseshoe and conversations with the district, is that, as I said to the body, we are confident as a district that whatever building this, the city gives us at the end, we can make a world-class educational opportunity for our students. And that, from the conversations we've had in our horseshoe, it was not clear to me there was a consensus academically as to what the best option is. But the factors we considered were, and we shared that, and I know that Ms. Donara shared the presentation from the district's perspective. So that's where I think we left it. Again, if this body really wants to make a declarative statement, that is our right.
Just quickly on timeline, the mayor is still, the current mayor is still thinking she will make a decision before the end of the year. Is that a correct understanding? He's nodding his head, is that your understanding as well?
Yes, my understanding is that Mayor Ballantyne, in some consultation with Mayor Lex Wilson, will still plan to make a final recommendation this calendar year.
The MSBA then has to approve that?
Yes.
Recommendation, okay. Dr. Phillips?
Thanks, through you, Chair. One thing that kept coming up for me as I listened to what sounded like, from the words, a very intense CAG meeting, was getting some clarity on who has what power, when, in the process. I think all of us, right, have had constituents go on and on and on about something that at the end of the day, we have no power over. And as I listened to the meeting, as I listened to Nikki and Amara very diplomatically trying to explain who had the power, it made me sense that like, none of us are really clear on who has what power in this process. And so I'm wondering if our comms folks, maybe with folks who are managing this on the city side, could just come up with a one-pager, so we're all clear, what's the school committee's power, what's the building committee's power, what's the CAG's power, what's the mayor's power, through each phase of this? Thanks.
So this came up at our last MSBA meeting, at a building committee meeting, where several of us asked the building committee to create that timeline and those, identify those decision points. I would argue, and I will argue actually, I would argue, and I will argue, actually, that if we do not get that by our next building committee meeting, which is December 1st, that I would suggest that school committee just go ahead and buy the building, ask our lawyers to produce a memo ourselves. Obviously, I'd rather someone else pay, I'd rather the city pay for that work than not pay for that work. But if they're not going to do it, I think we should definitely do it. And I would agree entirely that at least we lay out for everyone's benefit.
Thank you, through the chair. First, I wanted to clarify. I didn't quite understand through you, to Mr. Green, something about a December 1st meeting. Is that a CAG meeting? Is that an MSBA meeting? And what are, I did not quite understand what
The building committee.
Yes, so the school building, like, the new building committee meeting?
Yeah.
And that, what are you saying on December 1st you need to
So at our last meeting, to Dr. Phillips's point, several members of the building committee also asked for just like a one-pager laying out what decisions are made, when, by who, what are the contingencies? And if we don't get it by the next meeting, or are planning to get it, I would just second recommend that we pay our lawyers to do it.
Thank you. It's been very confusing because the parts have been moving. Obviously, the current mayor is not going to continue, and there's a mayor-elect, and they're all saying that they're going to confer. I think that's the language that has been used. My understanding is, you know, the CAG is going to make their recommendation, which is not necessarily a full-blown recommendation. It's, you know, as Mr. Green said, it's kind of moving towards a larger building. I also understand that the city staff, which basically is Director Raish and the Finance Director
Ed Bin.
Ed Bin, thank you, are going to make their recommendation. So the mayor's going to have these two inputs. And I think we have a choice as a school committee to say whether or not we want to have an opinion or not. And it's up to the school committee to decide what that opinion could be, because it could run the spectrum. It could be a unanimous something, or it could be, you know, we voted on whatever motion one of our members put forward that they wanted to put forward, and that we had this type of vote on it. But I think it would be in our best interest to assert whatever authority that we want to assert in this process. It's input to the mayor. The mayor makes, you know, makes them, makes their recommendation to the building committee, who makes the final decision. And I would really encourage us as a body to not be silent on this topic. We may or may not get to a unanimous choice on this, but I do think that I would recommend to the chair that this is on the agenda for next meeting, which would be December 2nd, and that members want to think about what they
It's December 1st, I believe.
It's the 1st, thank you. Monday, the 1st. And members want to think about what they may or may not feel comfortable bringing forward, and that we actually deliberate on this topic. And again, it's not our final decision. It's going to go, all these inputs are going to go to the mayor, and then the mayor's going to make their recommendation, and it's going to go to the building committee. So that's my recommendation. The chair and the superintendent can confer on that idea.
Could I just ask a question? I know that, my understanding is that the CAG was tasked with providing, the scope of the task was to determine the location as well as the size, is that right? And the size, well, that was actually what was in the statement when we originally, when the mayor came and said, this is the CAG. The CAG has, their scope of the work is twofold. One is to make a decision as to where is the recommendation, a recommendation to the mayor, as to where was the location, Trump or Sycamore? And, or a third option, which we don't think that that was explored. And the third one was, do either we combine or we keep it separate? That is the scope of what was outlined for the CAG. Because I know that the SBC will be making the determination about the programmatic design. And that's with the input of, like, all, I mean, it could be as small as a 20 or a 70 group, that's the size of the SBC. Or the educational leadership team that is informing the SBC. So that's my understanding of that, and that ultimately that decision, MSBA will approve, depending on the scope of the project, they will say, yes, we'll contribute our share of what we said we're going to pay, or that's your choice, and you pay out of your own pocket, whatever extension of the project that is within that, that is not within the scope of what MSBA will approve. So I don't know that, but so I just wanted to ask the question of, there was a question that I had for you, which was, what is the, what are we deciding the scope of the recommendation based on the recommendation of the CAG or a recommendation based on the SBC's recommendation?
I understand that we won't have the SBC's recommendation at this point. So the thought was, well, I think we're going to have the CAG recommendation by that point. And the school committee can weigh in and say, we support the CAG recommendation, we support this part of it, we don't support that. Whatever the school committee as a body decides to deliberate on and to either endorse or not, we may decide to not support anything because we can't come to any agreement. But I do think that we should include time to deliberate, based on the inputs that we do have, to provide either some kind of formal information to the mayor, so the mayor's making a decision, and actually hearing formally from the school committee.
Oh, it sounds like the recommendation here is just to have an agenda item for our December 1st meeting that is CAG recommendation and vote, or something along those. I'll figure out what the agenda item is. But basically, we would have the CAG recommendation, and what would be before us is to decide if we want to endorse it, if we don't want to endorse it, if we want to endorse a piece of it, whatever that motion is, would be, but it'll be on the agenda for December 1st. Did someone else have their hand up? Okay. Okay. Yes, Ms. Barish?
I apologize. When we were discussing sections H and L, there was one other language change in the memo that we didn't discuss at all. I just, I don't know what the appropriate process is to, like, introduce a new motion?
Much as introduce a new motion to
Okay.
Add the
I move to accept the language recommended by Mr. Sumner's legal advisor for policy HF, which would be to negotiate in good faith with recognized bargaining units to arrive at mutually satisfactory agreement on wages, hours, and working conditions of employees represented by the units and other mandatory subjects of bargaining, and changing they at the start of each bullet point to the negotiator.
That good? All right. I have a motion by Ms. Barish, seconded by Dr. Phillips. If there is no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, as always, for your thoroughness.
Thank you to you all for your grace.
Okay. So we completed the MSBA update. That brings us to October bill rolls. I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve the October bill rolls.
I have a motion by Dr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Betone. If there is no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to some field trips.
I move to approve the following field trips. On January 4th, 2026, 31 students from Somerville High School chorus will travel to the Dunkin' Donuts Center in Providence, Rhode Island, to perform at the Providence Bruins game. Travel via bus, student cost $20. On January 22nd, 2026, 12 students from Next Play Full Circle will travel to Pat's Peak in New Hampshire. Travel via van, student cost $25. And on February 26th, 2026, 12 students from Next Play Full Circle will travel to Pat's Peak in New Hampshire. Travel via van, student cost $25.
Second. Motion by Mr. Betone, seconded by Dr. Ackman. Ms. Barish?
Thank you. In the field trip request for Pat's Peak, I noticed something that I haven't noticed before. It says that students can complete chores around school to work off the $25. And I, again, I had never seen it before, and I thought, oh, that's interesting and different. And how do I feel about that? Like, that some students might have to do chores around the building to pay for the field trip, while other students' families can afford to pay for the field trip? And also, are there any collective bargaining agreement-like problems with, depending on what the job is, if it's a job that some of our staff members do? Like, I hate to pick apart the idea, but I guess that's my job. So I certainly don't think that it should prevent the field trip from happening, but this aspect maybe deserves some consideration and discussion.
Yes, thank you for bringing that to my attention. I will look into that and get back to you with an update from the school. I agree with your wonderings, and I need to learn more from the school on that.
Mr. Betone?
Thank you, through the chair. I appreciate Ms. Barish's curiosity about that topic. I also, I don't know what our policy is, but it is really nice to have the forms in our packets. We don't have a form for the, it's not that I'm not going to support approving it, but the other trip, because in there, there's always a line about what accommodations will be made for students who cannot pay. And I think that's something that the school committee has been very concerned about and wanting to make sure that every single, that we understand the plan around that. So I would, I don't know if we need to put that in our policy, or if we want to just make that request that in the future that we just continue to get the copies of all the field trip forms, unless people disagree with me.
That's a great idea. Ms. Barish?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that my, I guess, misgivings about some students working to pay for this. I think that a group fundraiser, like, if students who are working at the refair, like, some of that money goes to support this field trip, like, I have no problem with fundraising. It's just the idea of, like, certain students doing certain chores to pay for a specific field trip felt uncomfortable.
Mr. Green?
Yeah, I'm going to echo that concern. Like, if everyone got a free field trip for doing it, I love that idea. That sounds amazing. But I would be really nervous about creating two tiers of students, one who has to do service, and one who can opt out of it because their parents have more money. So I think that's a conversation I would just ask you to have with the administration. Like, except if they want to make every student have to do hours of service, I'm here for that, as much as I don't violate some collective bargaining agreement or rule I'm aware of. But two tiers does not feel like the right spirit for me.
Mr. Betone?
Thank you, Chair, through you. To Ms. Betone's point, I've said before, and I appreciate her bringing it up, that it's helpful having information on items that we are planning to vote on, even if it's, you know, a field trip, or a grant, or, you know, just something to provide some context and backup, I think is always helpful. So appreciate having these here tonight. Thanks.
Okay. Dr. Boston Davis will get back to us on that. And if there are no further questions, and if people are comfortable doing it, all in favor, motion. All opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to some acceptance of grants. I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve three state grants from Mass Cultural to the Capewano School in the amount of $5,000, from Mass Cultural to the Winter Hill School in the amount of $5,000, and from Mass Cultural to Somerville High School in the amount of $5,000.
I have a motion by Dr. Ackman, seconded by Mr. Betone. If there is no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to items from committee members. Dr. Ackman?
Thank you, through the chair. It is my understanding that the Commissioner of Education of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts is heading to our district, or has plans to. I know these things can change. Care to share how this came about? This is pretty exciting.
Yeah. You know, I always get the memos, the update from the Commissioner, and he's always showcasing different districts. And I felt that there is so much to showcase, so I did advocate it for a visit. I feel that CT and the East have two amazing programs, and the high school and the East have amazing programs, and I felt like that's something to celebrate. So we reached out to them, and they said, of course, we'll come and visit. And so that's where we are. We, my idea, well, the idea is to actually have them come and see the dual-language program, probably interview, talk to kids. I just wanted to have kids actually to have some voice and agency in a conversation with the Commissioner, and then have the Commissioner visit the high school, or vice versa. I think the high school is switching the direction of the start of the meeting. It was just mainly that. I know that every time he visits, there is, you know, there is some kind of a publicity around that, and I feel that there is a good story to tell here. And I feel that often he actually goes over the MCAS data and visited schools that actually have gone beyond the pre-pandemic numbers. And so I said, you know, that should not be the only reason why he visited schools. So it, you know, we tried to do that. So that's the reason for that, and, you know, I invited a couple of folks to join us for that.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that's a big deal, and I'm very proud, and I appreciate you doing that advocacy work on behalf of our programs.
Any other items from committee members? If there are none, we are adjourned. Oh, condolences. Thank you.
Before we adjourn?
Yes, before we adjourn. Condolences, yes.
The school committee extends its deepest condolences to the family of Maria A. Parabello, mother of Rosanna Parabello, director of out-of-school time.
Now we are adjourned. Good night, everyone.